I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And for the record, all council members are present. Let's see, item two on the agenda is special presentations. Michelle, any special presentations for tonight? None? Thank you. Item number three is public comment. Keeping with our COVID observations, public comment for items that are not on the agenda will be addressed in a manner provided by the town administrators. Emergency Order Number 8-2020, and that is that you can email the town clerk's office up until 5 o'clock on the day of a council meeting, and your public comment will be made a part of the record. We do not have any public comment for this meeting, correct? Okay, thank you. Item number four, reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Mr. Hendricks, I'm going to let you go first with your lengthy list.
Why, thank you. So last week was pretty busy for me. Attended pretty much all of my liaison board assignments. So the first one was Centennial Airport Community Noise Roundtable. Interesting tidbit from that. Atlanta ranks number one as far as airport operations for takeoffs and landings. Denver's number four, and Centennial is number 10 in the whole nation.
Wow.
Also attended the Douglas County Youth Initiative. They have several events coming up. 2021 Outstanding Youth Awards set for April 26, a Douglas County Youth Leadership Summit coming up in Mayarch, I believe, and then a youth congress 2021 in May. Also attended the Parker Senior Center meeting. They have some March events coming up, too. Name the newsletter contest, butter braid sales, which is addictive, and a shoe drive. I was invited also by the Downtown Business Alliance of Parker to speak and do a Q and A session with our members. I had a chance to meet my buddies at the Parker Chamber of Commerce, so that was fun. We discussed economic development and all things Parker. And then finally, I did an outreach to Parker Task Force, which is an organization near and dear to my heart. They wanted to express thanks to the entire town, especially the police force, for all they do in supporting the Parker Task Force. I was told last month they donated $48,000 to families for rent and utilities assistance, and they hope to have a food drive in April. Thank you.
Excellent. Busy man. Councilmember Pogue.
Oh, yeah, I've only had a couple of meetings in the last two weeks. Both of them were with chamber board members and talked about some of the things that they're looking at, some revisions to community activities, and also maybe being the bridge for the issue I brought up last week, where we have public and private issues to resolve to get community services out, and they might be interested in being a conduit, which would be good. And then I have a couple of other issues that I want council to look at in the very near future. That is looking at putting limits on campaign contributions and campaign expenditures. We are also in the process of revitalizing the Parker Greater, or the Greater Parker Foundation. Laura and I will be working with staff to look at changes in the Articles of Incorporation and the Bylaws, and changing its focus, different grant writing opportunities. So I think that's going to be exciting to work on. And then there are some other issues out there that I'd like to see, but I think in the future, those are my critical ones right now.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Diack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see here. On the 11th, I had an E470 Board meeting. You know, from my analytical, numbers-driven mind, the important things were the quarterly dashboard report, as well as the KPMG audit update. E470 will be going through their audit process, and I'll be dealing with that at the Finance Committee level here next week. We had a debt management briefing. There's a 2021 bond transaction where LIBOR out in the marketplace is going away. It's being de-emphasized. So the authority needs to effectively refinance bonds to cash in the LIBOR-linked bonds for the other future-to-be-determined aggregate index, if you will. We also had a customer experience survey overview report. And again, all of these are on the E470 website under Investor Relations. If not, you can email me. I did meet my chamber buddies Friday. We didn't talk about, but we should have talked about, the length of Councilmember Hendricks' list tonight. That was pretty lengthy. Let's see here. Monday, although President's Day, I met with the E470 Executive Director as part of my, I guess, executive committee duties on his goals for 2021. Had a great conversation. And then this morning, I had my last Regional Transportation Committee meeting for Dr. Cog. As a function of being Chair of Dr. Cog, I do also chair the RTC meeting. That is a meeting of RTD, CDOT, and Dr. Cog to go over the Dr. Cog Agenda, which will happen tomorrow, and to get concurrence and input from the other agencies within Colorado. So with that, that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hefta.
Thank you, Mayor. So yes, we did have a great last week, Greater Parker Foundation meeting with Councilmember Pogue and myself and the staff, which was very educational. And again, we are exploring ways right now for the greater good of the Parker Foundation, to bring more grant money into the town, to bring more money to distribute into the town, and to attract quality board members as well to the Greater Parker Foundation meeting. So that was very educational. Thanks to Mr. Maloney and DeNette. In addition, I did attend the Cherry Creek Water Basin Meet and Greet, which went very well and had a great education there. I also did attend the Parker Chamber of Commerce Meet and Greet, which went well as well, discussing ways to get the word out for small businesses in our town. I did attend as an alternate to the E470 meeting. And as an aside, again, I was appointed to the Southeast Christian Church Reset Board, Restart Board, that is going to be in the future, providing small businesses in Parker with grants if they apply to their program on the Southeast Christian Church website. Under the Give tab, small businesses in Parker may apply for grant money and business advice. This is a program through the Southeast Church to assist the small businesses in the town of Parker. And so we did have some good information come out of that meeting as well. So all in all, a pretty busy week.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. And I just want to say to all four of you, thank you so much. I know that you have a heavier load with two council members missing at this point, but we've got the Candidates Night tomorrow night, where we're going to be picking ballot order for the candidates. So hopefully, your replacements and a little relief for you is coming soon. And Todd, hopefully, your list will get a little bit shorter. But I think we will grant you unanimous consent to revise your list if you need to and submit it for the record. All right. Thank you, everyone. Next up on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of the Consent Agenda item unless council votes to remove an item for discussion. Ordinances on the Consent Agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, before you have 5A, B, and C, and of note is a proclamation for a Health for Humanities Yogathon this month, from February 1st through the 19th.
Can we have the mayor demonstrate Yogathon, please? Is that possible, Mr. Mayor?
I don't think we have the strength for that.
No? We got plenty of space up front.
I don't even know how to answer that, because I'll just get myself in trouble. So no. But thank you for that.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda items 5A through 5C.
I second.
Awesome. It has been moved by Councilmember Diack, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. You should see a vote come up on your screen. Motion passes unanimously. Next up, item number six, is our public hearing. And this is going to be a bit of a unique public hearing for us. It's our first one as a new council, but it's also the one where the town is the applicant. So we will proceed with that, and I will open the public hearing at 7:10. The order of business is to address a site plan amendment for Salisbury Equestrian Lot Number One. The order of business will be as follows. A staff presentation, the applicant's presentation, which should be the same, and any public testimony, closing comments, and then any closing comments by the staff. So Brianna, would you like to lead us through the staff comments?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. This is a proposal for a site plan amendment for site improvements at the Salisbury Equestrian Park. The site is generally located east of Matzenbacher Road and north of Hess Road with an address of 12010 Matzenbacher Road. This project proposes to add parking lot lighting at the town-owned facility in order to improve both safety and operations of this facility. This parking lot was originally constructed over 20 years ago without lighting. The lack of lighting is a safety concern, as employees that work from this facility often arrive prior to daylight or leave during the night, particularly when the town is conducting snow removal. The project has been designed with perimeter lighting that meets the town of Parker lighting standards for shielding, brightness, and uniformity ratios. Can you hit it again? Thank you. Staff has reviewed the proposal, and as outlined in staff's report, has determined that the project is consistent with the lighting requirements found in the Land Development Ordinance, and all public notice requirements have been met. Planning Commission heard this item on February 11th of this year and recommended approval. Therefore, staff and Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve the Site Plan Amendment request to Salisbury Equestrian Park for parking lot lighting improvements. Both Chris Hudson from Public Works, who is the applicant, and myself are available for any questions that council members may have.
Excellent. Any questions for staff, council?
What took so long?
Cheryl, questions?
Just a question. Do you have a photo of the type of light that you're planning to put in there, just so we can see what that is?
Not in my presentation tonight, unfortunately, but there are pole lights that have shielding around it so that the light projects down.
So is it a flat dome top, or how does that?
It's a flat top and shielding around it, so that way the light doesn't project out.
All right. Just curious.
If you'd like to step out in the parking lot, I can show you exactly what we're doing. We're matching.
Tell me which ones are on my way out. I'll look.
Right out here, we're matching the style of light. The light fixture matches exactly what we have at Town Hall.
Okay. It's good to know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have to go out there at some point tonight.
Perfect. Cheryl, any other questions?
No.
Councilmember Diack?
I got nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, and that's matching with the rest of the park. That's right there. The lights are matching with the rest of the park. That's...
So the rest of the park, black poles. We're matching the existing black poles that are there.
Yeah.
These are LED fixtures. The rest of the park is not LED. You cannot get the old metal halides that are out there today, and ultimately, the park's lights will be upgraded to LED in the future, as we have a program where we're basically upgrading to LED around the community, and in time, we'll be replacing them as well to match. We've standardized on a fixture, so if you look at the parking lot here or the parking lot at the Pwok facility, exact same light fixtures.
And how many lights are going in?
10.
10 lights. And this is definitely going to improve the safety for the folks coming in in the morning at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning.
During snow ops, they come in at 4:00 a.m.
Okay, yeah.
And that's the park staff. And I will tell you that I used to be officed out here 21 years ago out at Matzenbacher. It was a complaint 21 years ago, the lack of lighting. And kind of with staff, we budgeted and appropriated and finally got it approved through the Capitol process. And I think it'll be a great safety addition for the staff that's out there, because when you come 4:00 a.m. on snow operations, you could have ice in the parking lot and not even see it. And that's been one of the biggest complaints that we've had for years.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. So normally, at this time, we would have the applicant come forward, but since he's now sitting down, unless you have any other questions of Chris or Brianna. All right. If you would like to make a comment, we're going to move to the public comment section on this. If you'd like to make a comment, you can hit star 6. And DeNette, do we have any public comments?
There are no public comments. Oh, yes, we do have one. Wayne DeBlock.
I'm on Zoom. I was just wondering what the cost was. That's all.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
No more public comments?
Mr. Hudson's coming back to the mic.
We've budgeted about, I think it's $125,000 for this project in the capital line item. We have gotten bids back on it. It's about $100,000 to install this project. So about $10,000 per luminaire. As a rule of thumb, going forward, if you're like, hey, I want to add luminaires here, it's about $10,000 a pop.
10 grand. Okay. Thank you, Chris. DeNette, anybody else for public comments? I saw Mr. DeBlock come off mute.
Thank you.
No other comments.
No other comments? Okay. Then we're going to close the pub... Okay, then we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
I'm having a riot down the road here.
I'm sorry.
At... The gentleman did not give his name and address.
I'm sorry. Mr. DeBlock, could you give your name and address for the record?
Sure. It's Wayne DeBlock, 12166 Windy Trail Lane, Parker, Colorado.
Great. Thank you. We'll be sending you a thank you card from the clerk's office.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:17. Council, any further questions, comments, anyone? Then I entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Site Plan Amendment to Salisbury Equestrian Park Lot One for the addition of parking lot lighting.
I second.
Great. It has been moved by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Your voting should pop up on your screen. And motion passes unanimously. And just for the record, the public hearing began at 7:10 and ended at 7:17. All right, on to ordinances. The first ordinance, ordinance number 9.136.4 on second reading, has been asked to be continued to a date certain of March 15th. So if council's in agreement with that, I'll need a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.136.4 is moved to a date certain, March 15th, 2021.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Diack, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Chris, do you need a roll call on this, or... Okay. Should have a vote popping up. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move that to the March 15th agenda. Item number 7B, ordinance number 9.329 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the town of Parker and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas regarding cost sharing for construction of the High Plains Trail.
Mayor and council, I'm going to appear on behalf of Mr. Trapp. Apparently, it's his kajillionth wedding anniversary. Maybe 40 years?
Wow.
Yeah. So in any case, the ordinance before you tonight is an IGA between the town and the county, and this is for the county's portion of the contributions needed to construct the High Plains Trail. The contribution by Douglas County is going to be $750,000. If you take a look at the council action form, you will see all the different contributions that are being made in order to get up to the construction allotment of $7,575,000 to construct the trail. And then obviously, the most expensive component is the overpass across Parker Road. But in any case, this is simply to get Douglas County's contribution. Ultimately, we'll be coming back to you with an amendment to the existing intergovernmental agreement we have with Arapahoe County, which is going to oversee the project. And that IGA will identify how these funds will be advanced to Arapahoe County so they can start building the project.
Thank you. I'm going to start over to my left on questions. Councilmember Hefta, any questions on this?
Not so much a question, just as an expression of appreciation for the various partners on this project. Many times, people don't realize that in order to make a project work, you do have to get certain towns and governments to actually put some money into these projects for these trails to be approved, for a transportation project to be approved. So I'd just like to express that appreciation for everybody coming together, Tana Parker, Douglas County, Arapahoe County, Aurora, the Great Outdoors of Colorado Trail Grant that was approved, the Dr. Cog Denver County Government, Regional Government Transportation Funding approved, and the Sub Regional Transportation Funding approved, and the E470 Authority approving that to get this project completed.
Thank you. Councilmember Diack?
Thanks. No, I think it's a good project. I appreciate the commissioners working with us. This was sort of a twinkle in Dennis Trapp's eye about 20-plus years ago to try and get a trail alongside, and it just so happened that the stars aligned, and the United Nations of Trails was about to be built. Trademark Chris Hudson, by the way. The only other question I have, Chris, is Centennial still not? I'm just trying to get you up as much as I can to come over. Okay. All right.
We're still working on Centennial. They're looking to do a 2022 contribution through their agreement they have with Arapahoe County.
Open space.
Through their open space shareback that they have with Arapahoe County. So still to be determined. I do believe you and I did meet with the council member from Centennial back in October of last year.
Public Works.
Yes. And things are still in motion, but it's looking to be a 2022 contribution is what they're looking to do to the project.
Would that be additive to this amount, or would there be sort of a realignment or maybe a clawback?
It may be a realignment. It's kind of what I've been hearing from Arapahoe County. So they may lower their contribution in the end. So to be determined.
Great. Thank you.
John? Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I'm excited. I'm a trails person from way back, and I think, you know, Dennis has done a great job working these parts and pieces, putting it together. So it just adds to Parker's inventory of trails, which is extensive. And I think that's why we have such a high standard of living out here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I'll just echo what everyone else has said. Everyone loves recreation, and it's a great project. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. We will open this up for public comment at 7:24 p.m. If you'd like to make a comment, you can raise your hand or hit star 6. DeNette, do we have any public comments indicated?
No public comments, Mayor.
Okay, then we'll close it at 7:24 p.m. And council, any further comments or questions? Cheryl, John? And if there is none, I think Todd has a motion pending.
We're about the hiccup. I move to approve ordinance number 9.329 on second reading.
Okay.
I second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. You should see a vote popping up for you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Making notes for the next items.
And that ordinance passes unanimously. And that ordinance passes unanimously. Next item up is 7C, ordinance number 1.550 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance stating the intent of the town of Parker to acquire real property for the purpose of constructing and improving Matzenbacher Road, a town roadway through the utilization of the town's power of eminent domain, and directing the town's staff and town attorney to notify all persons affected thereby of the above stated intent of the town, and thereafter to comply with all pertinent provisions of CRS Section 38-1-101 relating to good faith negotiations. Mr. Hudson, welcome back. We haven't heard from you in a while.
I'll actually sit down here for this one. But as the mayor stated tonight, you have an ordinance regarding the Matzenbacher Road intent to acquire. Next slide, please. Background on this, due to continued growth in the southwest quadrant of the town, we've got to do some improvements to Matzenbacher Road. And we're anticipating to start construction in the second half of 2021. The project that we're considering will basically construct a northbound to westbound double left-hand turn lane. There's a single left there today. And just as a kind of a rule of thumb, a single left can handle about 400 vehicles per hour in a peak hour. When we did the counts before COVID, this turn lane was at 525 vehicles per hour in the peak hour. This will also, the project will also complete the widening on the west side of Matzenbacher Road to allow for an additional southbound lane, south of Hess Road to match the section that's already built to the south between French Creek and Kaiser Creek. And also eliminate a sidewalk gap that we've gotten complaints on for numerous years from citizens that live to the south, trying to get back up to the town's amenities to the north. Take, for example, the Salisbury Park. To get there now, they either have to walk down to the Cherokee Trail or walk in the road on Matzenbacher, and this will eliminate that gap from the residential development to the south. Next slide, please. We've identified two areas of right-of-way needed to complete the improvements. The total of about 14,000 or about a little, about a third, a little bit more than a third of an acre total, northwest corner and southwest corner of Hess Road. And both property owners have been contacted about the planned improvements. Informally, we've contacted them. Next slide, please. This is kind of showing the limits of the project. We talked a little bit about what we're going to do with the project. I've had people ask, when are you going to do the northbound lanes? They'll be done at a future date. The bottleneck today is not, is not the northbound lanes. And we're, there has been also some talk about potential redevelopment of the Valley Crest site. And maybe that comes into play, and so the town doesn't have to do it, and we can get a developer to do it in the future. Next slide, please. So this basically kind of shows the two areas of acquisitions. Northwest corner is actually owned by the Archdiocese, excuse me, the Diocese of Colorado Springs. And the southwest corner is owned by North Parker Investments. The dedication at the North Parker Investments is consistent with what a dedication we just got from the south. It was a 20-foot right-of-way. And the dedication to the south happened through the plat. This property is not moving forward at this time, the southwest corner, and so that's why we've identified this to get this done. Next slide, please. Again, two total areas, consistent right-of-way dedication with what happened on the south. We're also talking about the property on the southwest corner, about an IRA easement that needs to be acquired. We've had good negotiations with them so far. And the town and town staff will engage in good faith negotiations for the needed negotiations. We do not take the power of eminent domain lightly. Town staff does. It is after an extensive and exhaustive good faith negotiations. Last summer, town council approved the negotiations intent to acquire for Cottonwood Drive. And there was 15 property owners on that that were identified for temporary construction easements. We've been able to negotiate with all of them. The only one we have outstanding right now is an ugly divorce that we're trying to work through. Hopefully, there's no divorces going on with these two corporations that we're dealing with here. And again, the improvements may be considered to benefit the adjacent property, but we will basically value consideration based on market value if needed. And where I'm going with that is the property owner at the southwest corner, they're planning to develop. If they were plating, like the property just to the south was, we'd be asking them to dedicate the right-of-way. So we're hoping to get that right-of-way through that process at no cost to the town. But if we need be, we will have to pay market value. With that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thanks, Chris. Just before we go to questions real fast, I'm going to ask the town attorney, Jim Olady, could you walk through? So Chris raised the issue of eminent domain. Can you, can you just clarify the steps that we're taking and under what statute?
So the pertinent statute is 38-1121, and it states, "As soon as a condemning authority determines that it intends to acquire an interest in property, it shall give notice of such intent, together with a description of the property to be acquired to anyone having an interest of record in the property involved. If the property has an estimated value of $5,000 or more, such notice shall advise that the condemning authority shall pay the reasonable cost of the appraisal pursuant to subsection 2 of this section." So the ordinance that you're considering tonight is that, is the notice of intent, which is required by the statute. And so the first step is you approve the ordinance tonight. The next step, which I think Chris already has underway, and that's the appraisals. Once we get the appraisal done, then we're going to go ahead and we're going to contact the property owner, and we're going to indicate to them that they have the right to obtain their own appraisal, since these properties are probably in excess of $5,000. We'll be having our appraisal completed after 90 days. We get together, we share our appraisals, and we engage in good faith negotiations. If we cannot conclude a deal based upon good faith negotiations, then we'll come back to you. You have the ultimate decision whether or not you want to file a condemnation action.
Okay. Thanks, sir. I'm going to start to my right. Cheryl, any questions?
Of course. Maybe not a question, a clarification. So in prior discussion on this issue, I think it was explained that this is more or less a friendly use of eminent domain. Is that still the case?
Well, I don't know if it's a friendly condemnation, but my understanding is that we have two property owners, which we think we can negotiate a satisfactory resolution. The first is the Anthology North ownership, which we think they're going to go ahead and convey the easement for IRA as well as the right-of-way by special warranty deed without any cost to the town. And we think the Archdiocese of Colorado Springs is going to require that we pay the appraised value for the property. So we don't anticipate even coming back to you to ask the question, do you want to condemn?
Yeah.
But we're just taking the first step, which is the notice of intent, and I read you the statute, so.
Well, I hesitate to get into negative eminent domain issues. And as long as this is considered positive.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
Councilmember Hendricks?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Dyak?
Yeah, no, no. I mean, just to follow up on Councilmember Pogue's statements, I mean, I think we all sort of focus on eminent domain as being adverse or in opposition. We're just simply, I think, using the conduit of eminent domain or the estate statute to get to the point where we can have a discussion. So I am completely fine with where we're at and where we're going. Thank you.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilmember Hefta?
To me, right now, this seems like a win-win, not to quote Stephen Covey, but for all involved, the property owners will negotiate with the town and get a fair price for their land. And that corner is one which I drive on a regular basis by that whole area. And that's going to benefit not only improved road conditions, not having that left turn back up as much as it is right now, but also, as Mr. Hudson mentioned, right now, there's no way for some folks to get to the park. They'd have to go on Matzenbacher Road to actually get to Salisbury Equestrian Park. There's no sidewalk. So we do need a way for people interested in outdoor activities to actually come from further up the road, the other developments up there closer to Hess, to the Salisbury Equestrian Park. So if we have some type of trail cut through there, sidewalk, that's going to help people with their outdoor activities. So I can't, I see a win-win all around if we can come to an effective negotiation for the price on this.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. I'm going to open it up for public comment at 7:35. Again, star six or raise your hand. Danette, do we see anybody indicating public comment?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Yeah, we're going to close it at 7:35. And counsel, any further questions, comments? Anything? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.550 on second reading.
Thank you.
I second.
It's a move by Councilmember Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Vote when you see the sign. Moving on to item number eight in resolutions. First resolution, Resolution Number 21-008, a resolution finding substantial compliance of the Lincoln Professional Park Properties Annexation Petition with CRS Section 31-12-107 and setting a public hearing on April 5th, 2021 for the purpose of considering said annexation. Welcome back, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. So this is a resolution to set the public hearing date for the Lincoln Professional Park Annexation. So the Lincoln Professional Park property is an approximate 4.4-acre property located at the southeast corner of Lincoln Avenue and Dransvelt Road. It's highlighted in blue on this map. This resolution is the first step in the process to consider the annexation and will set the public hearing date. If Resolution 21-008 is approved tonight, it will set the annexation eligibility hearing for April 5th, 2021. The proposed annexation for this property is surrounded on all four sides by the town of Parker and meets the statutory requirements for annexation. It also is located within the town's planning area, is consistent with Parker 2035 Master Plan, and is identified in the 2023 Mile Plan. Again, this resolution is only setting the public hearing date for April 5th, 2021. A full presentation will be provided then, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 21-008.
Thank you, Stacy. Counsel, any questions on the setting of the hearing date?
No.
Okay. If there's none, we're going to go to public comment at 7:37 p.m. Again, raise your hand or star six. Danette?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Okay, then we're going to close it at 7:38. And I don't think there's any more comments or questions from the council, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 21-008.
Second.
Second, it's been, the motion was made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Dyak. You should see your opportunity to vote. And the resolution passes unanimously. Item number 8B, Resolution Number 21-010, a resolution to determine upon recommendation of the town administrator that the public interest will be served by a select source contract concerning the Pace Mainstage Theater Rigging System renovation project. And I believe we have our acting director, Ms. Glassburn, with us. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here again. If you recall.
Turn my call.
Thank you.
Yep.
I didn't know it was turned off. Didn't know you could do that. Anyway, as I was saying, on January 25th, we were in front of you during a study session special presentation about our recommendation to appoint Barbizon as our select source vendor for the Pace Center rigging system. So because you heard all of the details, then I'm not going to go into it all again tonight, but I do want to summarize our rationale for recommending that before you vote on the resolution. Before I go into that, though, I do want to reread the description that is on our select source waiver for the town, because it does give examples of some of the situations that qualify for a select source. So a select source justification exists if purchases for goods and/or services are directed to a single vendor based on warranty, prior experience or knowledge of the project, a shortened timeframe, an analysis process, or other factors that justify that the selection of the vendor is in the best interest of the town. I believe that we check the box on not just one, but on several of those criteria. So first of them, we are indeed working on a shortened timeframe. So we know that it takes from the time that we sign the contract. So with Barbizon or any vendor, from the time that we sign the contract, it takes 20 weeks to make the actual rigging system, install it, and have it ready, you know, for use on our stage. So if, and August is the only month where we can actually shut down our stage based on our presentation schedule. So we have to shut down our, August is the month that we will be installing this rigging system. So if you back up from August 1st, you back up 20 weeks, that puts us actually at next week. So we don't have time, unfortunately, to go through an RFP, a full RFP process. So one, we are working on a shortened time period. Next, Barbizon absolutely has prior experience and knowledge of the project that will benefit the town. If you remember, we told you that Barbizon was the company that originally installed the rigging system when the Pace Center was built. So for the last 10 years that we have been open, they have been the ones conducting the annual inspections and the maintenance of the system. So they are intimately familiar with the theater and our equipment. And I know that, speaking on behalf of both Jim from the facility side and Kevin from our production side, they are hesitant to trust just anybody, but they know that Barbizon knows our stuff, and they're comfortable having them manage this project. They don't just know the Pace Center's equipment, though. They are the number one installer in the world for this type of rigging system, and so therefore, they have more experience than any other company in the industry. And because they're the top installer in the world, they are able to negotiate the best rates with the manufacturers who they're going to have to go through, which is a benefit to the town financially as well. Now finally, because Barbizon is one of the few companies, they have this really niche experience in the specialized area, it is highly likely that any other company that we would go to would end up subcontracting with Barbizon anyway. So we do believe it's in the town's best interest to work directly with Barbizon in the first place. So if you have any questions, I've got Tracy here from a contracting perspective, I've got Jim from facilities, and we've got Kevin from production.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Counsel questions? I'll start with Councilmember Hendricks.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
I don't have a question. I think you understand from prior discussions my displeasure with the fact that this did not go out for bid, and the excuse of shortage of time really doesn't apply. There's a lot of time. You knew about this, you know, a year ago. So to me, it's a problem to offer a bid and go to a sole source when you have not presented us with information from other vendors.
Counselmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
I would just like to state that I have an understanding of sometimes how complicated some of these issues can be when you have a specific rigging system. And this would go to the, probably get to go to a subcontractor in any event. So it can be complicated sometimes to get this rigging system installed on the time system, on the project timeline, and then take into consideration that it probably would be subcontracted anyway to another, to Barbizon anyway. And the request for bid, that system can very, be very lengthy. If folks are not familiar with this, this contract system can be lengthy. So I would just like to express that I do appreciate your hard work in trying to make sure that our Pace Center is up for the enjoyment of our citizens this fall. So I just want to express my appreciation for that. And just also knowing that, again, this system can be complicated when replacing these parts.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we are going to open this up for public comment at All right, we are going to open this up for public comment at 7:45 PM.
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Great. We will close it at 7:45 PM. Council, any further questions, comments? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve Resolution 21-001.
I'll second.
010?
You know what? I may have a wrong number on the, yeah, I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it is 21-010. It just was incorrect at the summary. My apologies.
And you will accept the modified motion. It has been moved by Councilmember Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Please vote when you are prompted. And the resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Last resolution of the night, Resolution number 21-013, a resolution accepting the conveyance of a drainage easement from Vertical Bridge CC AM LLC, formerly known as iHeart Media Tower Company, IM LLC, for the northwest quarter, northwest quarter of Section 27 Township, 6 South Range 66 West of the Sixth Principal Meridian. And I don't know how much more specific I can get other than that. And I think we've got Michael with us this morning, this evening.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for having me. So this resolution proposes acceptance of a permanent drainage easement dedicated by Vertical Bridge CC AM LLC to the town of Parker. This easement is to be accepted in conjunction with the adjacent Cherry Creek Streams Capital Improvement Project. The proposed easement is approximately two and a half acres, large, and located within the Cherry Creek corridor north northwest of the McCabe Meadows Trailhead on the property locally known as the KOA Tower property. This easement is proposed to be accepted by the town at no cost to the town. This easement is located entirely within the Cherry Creek 100-year floodplain and also the town riparian conservation zone and is unavailable for any future development. The easement will contain the structural tie-in of the upstream improvement project and allow for minor realignment of the Cherry Creek stream to protect existing vegetation, utilities, and town park improvements, specifically that arbor walk. The old alignment of Cherry Creek will be preserved as a wetland to support local riparian habitat. Now, the purpose, the proposed project and improvements were included within the 2020 budget, and no budget amendments are being proposed. Therefore, staff recommends approval of Resolution number 21-013.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. We will start to my left. Councilmember Hefta, any questions?
Can we go back to that last slide?
Do you want the slide back up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, yes, just, just a little bit more information on the bullet number two consists entirely within the floodplain and riparian conservation zone. Did you gain any other additional information on that?
Yes. So the floodplain within this corridor kind of actually comes out of the, what you would think of as Cherry Creek and into the floodplain benches. Right now, that's on the KOA property in an undeveloped state. And so our easement is all within the actual corridor itself. So the floodplain boundaries are outside of that. And then the riparian conservation zone is a protected area for the Prebble's Meadow Jumping Mouse. And so there are pretty heavy restrictions on development within that zone. It's actually kind of marked on, or it is marked on this exhibit up on the top right leader. It's an orange line, and I can't see it from here. You may or may not be able to. But it's kind of up there on the other side of the bank. Yep. And so what our project actually proposes is what is considered a habitat enhancement. So by leaving in the wetlands, protecting existing vegetation, and then installing vegetation that supports wildlife habitat, we're allowed to come in here and do this work with the end goal of both helping conveyance and protecting Cherry Creek from erosion, as well as, you know, giving back to the mouse habitat in that area, which is, you know, mostly forested anyways in that area.
Thank you.
Lauren, anything else? Councilmember Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, I do. I noticed in here you were addressing some indemnification and construction restrictions for this grantor, whereas the town would not do it for another grantor of donated land. Why?
Well, I don't know if I know the specifics of that, of that protection.
It was the Lemon Gulch easement issue that we heard earlier.
Yeah. So the McQueen easement over on Lemon Gulch, you know, we had negotiated with Mr. McQueen. He had wanted to have several lawyers looking, look at it, so we had given him, and we had worked on it for a little over a year. He wasn't able to find exactly what he was looking for in terms of representation. And I don't know if that's worth going into, but, you know, Vertical Bridge AM LLC is a national corporation, and they have a legal counsel. And in addition, they have a AM tower on their property. And so there was a lot of concern, obviously, of our project impacting that tower. So our negotiations were primarily, you know, limiting impact to that tower and providing assurances that we won't be impacting that tower. So they're kind of two different situations. I don't know if I could speak to it much more than that, to be honest. I'm sorry.
I would just suggest that, and I know that legal counsel disagrees with me, but if we are asking people to donate land to the town for drainage easements or whatever, that the grantor in the contract that we designed have some protection built in.
Sure.
And we did not do that for, what was the name of the project?
Lemon Gulch, Mr. McQueen was the gentleman.
So with that, I just, I have a concern, whether they have an attorney or not, that we, as a town, should provide some protection to a grantor.
Well, we never indemnify, we can't indemnify. And in terms of the two projects, both grantors got a financial benefit back. McQueen actually got significant improvements to his property. And in this particular case, there's also significant financial benefit to KOA, to the improvements that we're making to Cherry Creek in this area. So that's why they're giving it to us for no cost because of what they're getting out of the project.
But what they're also had in this agreement, which represents the fact that they had attorneys involved, right, or lots of attorneys, but the constructive, construction restrictions, which I think is important for anybody who's having the town or anybody else do construction on their property as a grantor.
In this particular case, though, they they're worried about their tower. I mean, I'll tell you that if it wasn't for Kristen's brilliant work here, we probably would have come to you either to redesign the project or go through the condemnation process, because they wanted us to ensure that this project would affect the the power of their antenna.
I'm just saying that I feel that.
That's why they wanted to have the height limitation. They didn't want to have cranes out there, and we're not going to use cranes. So this is the sleeves out of our vest.
Yeah. I just feel that when we are dealing with a grantor, that we need to, whether they are small people and don't have attorneys or large corporations, I understand the need, even for the small individual that's granting us something, some indemnification, or at least some construction restrictions.
Understood. Councilmember Hendricks, any questions? Okay. All right, with that, we're going to open up public comment at 7:54 for last time tonight. Star six or raise your hand. Danette?
There are no public comments, Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comments at 7:54. And council, any further questions, concerns, or we'll entertain a motion?
I move to approve Resolution number 21 hyphen 013.
My second.
All right, it's been, the motion was made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Last vote of the night, almost last one. And the resolution passes unanimously with no other business before the town council. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Now, this is last vote of the night.
Are we still voting?
You want a roll call? Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes.
Councilmember Dyak?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hefta? With that, we're adjourned at 7:56. Thank you.[1774.83]